You know, as long as you let us know, we consider that an
Oh, absolutely.
All right, we're, we're.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, well, this is, this is a very short agenda and um. Ah, good morning, Phil. There we go.
Morning, Phil.
He can't hear us yet, I think. There we go.
Good morning.
Ah, there we go.
Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Shank.
Good morning.
You can call him Phil, Naihanda, you know, we all do.
Absolutely.
So anyway, thank you all for attending and this is a, this is the, the kind of weather a Zoom meeting is certainly a good thing to have. This is a topic that we have been sort of circling around for the twenty-five odd years I have been on the EDC off and on. Here comes Lenny. And we started the conversation at the last regularly scheduled meeting and there's Steve. Great. I'll wait for them to come on. Lenny, unmute yourself, please. Naihanda, you're muted also. I don't know if you want to be or not. It's up to you.
Oh, I just muted because, you know, the background noise and.
Okay, I mean, so far it's okay. It's hard to say. This is a conversation that we have had intermittently amongst various commissions over the years. Phil gives a pretty good historical rendition of where we came from, who we were, and who we evolved into depending on the various players. And that's, that's fine, except that that doesn't give us the continuity that we'd like to see us have. And it really doesn't answer the question that seems to be an ongoing issue of where do we belong, where do we belong in the scheme of things in the town structure? And it's, I felt that maybe we as a commission should try to define who we are and then see what kind of response we get from Phil and council, etc. And see if maybe that works because it hasn't worked the other way yet. We started having that conversation. I think that I would like to just either have people volunteer to start talking about it, or I can go around the, the squares. What I'm looking for is what kind of items you think should come before the commission? And at what point should they come to us initially and then perhaps come back to us? So would anyone like to start? Don't all speak at once. Okay. Okay, Naihanda, there you go.
Good morning, everyone. I guess since I'm the youngest one here. I'll go first.
Long shot, don't rub it rubbing in.
Okay, so what is the role of the commission? As it says, we have, our role is developing the community first, and so it will spin over in the speed. So I believe that the things that should come to the commission are things that relates to economic development. Making things easier in, in terms of investment in the community and growth. As it relates to policies around like what the road should look like and parking and all those things, I don't think that those are the things that we should be really concerned about is more driving growth economic wise in the community. If it's a project that is huge and would garner feedback from the public, then that's where it would come to us first to say, hey, guys, look at this project that we are pursuing. Does it make sense in what the goals of Bloomfield government is looking towards? And so we too have to be in line with what those goals are. So we need to understand what the goals of the town are to be able to be in sync with when we are looking at projects to make recommendations. After we have made our recommendation, then it goes back to the different town boards. They do what they need to do. Then they say, okay, guys, this is what we think. This is a final product that we come up with. And then we can go back now and evaluate it, provide recommendations. I think that, again, we are a board that provide recommendations. We don't make the decision, but we hold the town accountable for the things that they say they are going to do and, and supposed to be doing. So that's the role I, I believe that the commission should play in the bigger, in the big scheme of things.
It's very good. Phil, would you like to respond to that at all as, as part of the town?
I, I think it's fine. I think the commission has historically, and I'll stay away from historic, but I think that in, in general, the commission's role more recently has been to review, comment, recommend, not recommend on specific projects coming that have been put forward, particularly economic development type projects regarding abatements to their various businesses and industries that wanted to locate in town. And I think the commission has added value to that in, in recommending such things to the town council, either through the Land Use and Economic Development Subcommittee or directly to the council. So I have no problems with, with that vision in terms of looking at the larger issues related to economic development.
I guess the question I have, Siddiq, please.
Okay, I, you know, I'm gonna make some general comments, you know, and see your reaction to that. I, I think as I see, the issue is two, two-fold. One is the information flow amongst the different committees and departments of the town. And the second big issue is the hierarchical place of each committee or each department in the decision-making process. I think that is where we are mostly hung up in the decision-making process. Where do we stand? And in order to really straighten that out, I think we need to have a hierarchical chart or an organization chart where different committees, planning committees, zoning committee and EDC find their place in the hierarchy. So we already know that we are only a recommenderatory commission, but and to make it a little more effective in, in terms of information flow and also having some muscle, I would suggest that we should propose a structural change which may require bigger step like, you know, changing even the statutory requirements. I, I would suggest that in the chair of the EDC should be made an ex-official voting member of the town council. I think that would be the number one priority in my case. It will serve two important purposes. One, the flow of information between our commission and the town council would be smoother and regular. And second thing would be that we would be there casting a vote. So we would have some say in, in, in matters that relate to us at least. And then also overall, we can have some place in the hierarchy. I mean, this is sort of a model that the Federal Reserve System uses. The president of the Federal Reserve Bank of New York is an ex-official member of the Federal Open Market Committee, which is the decision-making body. In our context, it would be town council. So the New York president is an ex-official voting member and, and it is because of its special place in, in that decision-making process. So I envision EDC to be equally important, if not more important, in the town decision-making for development. Like Naihanda said, there are a lot of issues of development growth and that's where we, we should have our input. And unless we have, let's say, that, that say, on a regular basis, probably not happen. So, so I, and then the second part, I think of this suggestion, my suggestion would be that in the selection process, selecting the EDC members, you know, we should include maybe some input from the town council. I don't know if it has happened before or not, but at least in my knowledge, it doesn't happen. It is the chair of the EDC and the town manager who select the incoming members. So maybe that has to be also amended a little bit so that there is a two-way input. So the town council can, member can come and, you know, make some input and in selection process. So there is some communication, better communication, I would say. And in the future, the working relationship would be better over the years if they end up selecting two, three, four members. And, and, and of course, there are little things. I mean, one, one can have an organizational chart, probably Phil might have already worked on it or maybe, you know, think about, you know, structuring it. I mean, there has to be an organizational chart for the town. Different departments and committees, how do they interrelate with each other? And, and where, where is their hierarchical position? So I think that is my kind of a general view. I know it needs a lot of work. It needs a lot of parties to get together and agree to the thing. But my concept is really to give some structure to what we have sort of loose cannons here and there. So sometimes we get our way, sometimes we don't, sometimes we are heard or not. It should be a constant, regular thing and, and pretty clear to everybody what is expected of us and, and what, what they have to really deliver to us.
Very interesting concept. I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty much contrary to what EDC has always been. And I'll reserve my comments for later, my feeling about getting us involved in the political structure of the town. Phil, you had a number of years of giving me a chart, which pretty much, as I had said the last meeting, you were at the top and everything kind of went down from there. Has that chart been revised? And, and if not, maybe that's something EDC would want to do is to give our input as to where we think we belong. Maybe that's the start.
Well, I think we can create a chart, but as you all know, Bloomfield's a diverse community with the diverse opinions and diverse goals and agendas. And there are contrary opinions to some of the ideas, principles and causes or, or supporting projects that the EDC has.
But that's okay, Phil. That, that's democracy when it works.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it is a flow of information both, you know, both ways. If, it's, it's a matter of flow of information. Both sides should really interact with each other and then whatever the decision, voting decision.
So I would suggest that you all view the Conservation Energy and Environment Committees meetings that are also on Zoom and which Jose's office hosts as well. And perhaps a meeting of the two would generate some common goals and, and ideas. A, a lot of the hierarchical outline of roles and so forth is contained in the town charter, which is online. You can get it off of the website. The legislative body of the community is obviously the town council. The town council operates through six standing committees. One of those committees is the Committee on Committees, which vets and interviews people for positions on different boards and panels. As Bonnie has said, historically, the EDC's appointment powers rest with the town manager due to past historical roles of the EDC. If the town and when the town decides to change its charter the next time, there's been talk about making all EDC appointments by the council so that in the future, the manager is not involved with those appointments. In terms of the way we work today, Bonnie and I usually get together. I rely on Bonnie to a great extent and all of you to survey people that might be interested in serving. We currently have one vacancy, for instance. You also have to, have to remember, and I think we're talking longer term, I'm a temporary employee here due to expire the end of February unless the council decides to extend me through the budget. And then I'll expire and be out of, out of your reach. But in any case, the town charter governs in many cases the hierarchical relationship of, of the various boards and commissions. The EDC, the town, let me just back up a minute. The town has over thirty boards and commissions. Probably two-thirds of them are active and probably one-third are very active. And they all have roles and they all think that they should be, you know, a prime source of wisdom for, for the council. This council has from time to time discussed having each board and commission come in on a regular basis, once, you know, every couple of months or something like this to give a briefing to the council on activities that they're involved with. In many cases, the council's subcommittee, including the Land Use and Economic Development Subcommittee, which is one of the six standing subcommittees of the council, generally hears EDC or becomes involved with EDC activities or refers them. In terms of agenda items, normally an agenda item will go to the council. It will then be referred to the, to a subcommittee with advice that a advisory committee such as the EDC or CEEC may want to be consulted by the standing subcommittee of the council to which the item has been referred. And so that's essentially how it works. And then once the standing subcommittee has completed its work on an item, it's referred back up to the full council for review, recommendation and possibly approval. I think you were all involved with the recent arts policy and that kind of followed to a great extent that process. The detriments to that process are that it's, it's long, it's involved. Look at the TIF program. It's been three years since we even got it to the council. On the other hand, one of the positive aspects of that process is to get a diverse sentiment from the community through a variety of subcommittee reviews, recommendations and, and so forth before it goes before the council for possible approval. So the system is essentially set up through formal documentation through the town charter or through other ordinances of some, a large number of the existing advisory committees and so forth are governed by ordinance. Okay, so those are, are formal regulations of the town, which can only be changed through the town council, deleted or, or new ones added through the town council. So that's more the formal part of it. The informal part is the cross-section and intersection of ideas and policies and procedures and activities that are being conducted by each of the, the various advisory committees to the council. And rather than go on any further, I'll, I'll end it there. I hope that helps Siddiq to, to give you some idea. There is not really a, I mean, if you look at it from a hierarchical organizational charter, refrigerator diagram, so to speak, of what and how it works, the council's at the top, okay? And then you have a series of regulatory bodies, some of which by charter are independently elected, like the Planning and Zoning Commission. Okay, others that are regulatory in nature but are appointed. Okay, and then you have a series of advisory commissions, as I mentioned. So those would be on the bottom, okay? Probably side by side on a, on a chart. And as I said, there's approximately thirty boards, commissions, agencies, activities that that feed, feed into the, into the council eventually.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Phil. Siddiq? Oh, Jose, go ahead.
Just to, just to pile on with, with what Phil said, yeah, the town clerk did produce a very thick binder that shows up every single commission. And I got it Friday. Unfortunately, I was gonna hopefully get, let, let at least the chair come in and take a look at it. It's, it's too big to really reproduce. But I do have that from the town clerk and, and if you want to come in and take a look at it and, or borrow it and just, that's fine. And just, you know, a couple of things that, you know, the, the town council is a directly elected representative of the people. So it's, it's tough to, I don't, I don't know any, any example anywhere where, where where commission members get, become not elected members of, of, of a council. I've seen it the other way around though, where council members become ex-official members or liaisons to various boards and commissions. And they attend those meetings and report back to the council. So that may be something to explore. Again, it also could work, I think, where the EDC may want to appoint a liaison to, to to a, a subcommittee or, or like, like the Land Use and Economic Development Committee that regularly handles items of, of, of interest to the EDC. So you know, that would be my suggestion if you want to go that route to, to get. You know, and we do get a lot, a lot of attendance by council members. Even informally, we have some liaisons that, that listen in.
Siddiq, did you want to say something?
You know, I, I understand. I, I think I may not have made myself clear. It's that I understand there is a you know, complex structure and, and these kind of fundamental changes have to be brought about by the legal process, you know, like there are important statutory changes and, and rules and regulations have to be changed and it has to go through the mechanism. I was just throwing out a concept that there should be, there are loose ends and there should be tying the knots and connecting those loose ends somehow. I mean, this is one, you know, out of the blue thinking that, you know, as in the Federal Reserve System, there's one of the participants, you know, that becomes the ex-official member. I understand that it is not so easy to get into the elected body for a subset of the town to be the member and have be the voting right. So, so, but that is a concept, you know. If, if the town council is going to be more successful in its operations and deliberations and also delivery, I think it might be a good thing to have input like Phil was saying, from diverse corners, diverse opinions, and I recognize that. And so that input should be flowing a little bit smoother, faster and, and effectively. So I'm, I'm I mean, obviously town has been running for so long and, and things have been working out fine, you know? And I'm very happy, you know, I have been saying since I have moved into town about four years ago, this is the best place for living. And, and then the new statistics of that, that article came out, we are at the number ten position for, you know, living here. So that is great. I mean, so obviously we are doing great thing, you know, but it's always there's room for improvement. So in that spirit, I was suggesting that EDC can play a very, very important role. I know planning and other things are very important as well, but EDC is a little bit proactive in my view. EDC's charter also is like visionary kind of more enterprising, entrepreneurial thing rather than, you know, you know, turning the existing stuff or, you know, step-by-step changes, which the planning and zoning and other things take care of. But I think EDC's role in my mind is a little bit, and little bit more entrepreneurial, pre-norial, like more, you know, forward-looking. So in that kind of connection, I think it has some special place. But, but I realize what Phil and, you know, Jose are saying, it's not an easy thing. It cannot be done just by our wish. There's a lot of hurdles, but, but that, that's all I can say.
Bonnie?
Yeah, yes, Bob.
May I go ahead when it's my turn? But you had something to say first, so.
No, the only thing I was going to say is that if we were, if we were, ex-official to me, I see the issues there. I like the idea of a liaison, but I think the liaison just should not go to the full town council. I think the liaison should go to the subcommittee most in tune with what we're doing because what generally happens when I can see is the work is done in the subcommittees. And the subcommittees are pretty large. They're generally half of the council anyway. So that would be my only, my only suggestion. Bob, did you want to say something before I go to Jerry?
No, I'll take my turn if Jerry, if you want to have Jerry speak next.
I'm looking at how everyone is. I'm sort of going around here. Jerry, next?
I, I, I'm reluctant to say that we should become politicized and yeah. I think we're advisory. I think the problem is that I, I think Phil takes our advice. I think the council takes our advice, but that can change. We could elect council people that aren't interested and hire town managers that aren't that interested. And and I think actually that the entrepreneurial piece that we, we end up doing is when we're, when we don't have pressing issues, we help craft the overall economic development strategy for the town, I think. And that's, I think that's a, a very nice place to be. And I think not being politicized is a very nice place to be as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, let's remember that the charter gave two options. The option has always been that the manager appointed us. And I, my, my one comment about that would be we are an anomaly in that I don't think there's anyone else really that is made up of business people or people that are are concerned with, with business. And business people, and I'm going to try not to be political here, we have seen recently are not always make the best politicians. So I think we should be separated from that process as we have been over the years. But Siddiq, I like the idea of the interaction. I think that is something we definitely can pursue. Jerry, did you have anything else to say?
Mine?
Okay, thank you very much. Now, we've heard from you. Steve?
Right. I, I think if you, if you look back at the, the origination and the, and the state statute, we're there to, to promote and to assist the growth within the economic community. And how do we do that? So we stay away from politics, number one. And I think, and I think that's, I agree wholeheartedly with Jerry. We, we don't want to mess with that. So how do we interact? And I see from my short experience on this commission, it's a flow of information. Some of the things we do, like TIF, are broad when we have nothing else to do, which I think just generally help the community and anything that we do to help the community from a financial point of view, or whether it's complete streets, which makes our center more walkable, which helps the business in the center. I think those are all things that are involved. But I think when, when specific things are either being proposed by council, applications come before the zoning and wetlands. We need to somehow facilitate the interflow of information so that if our input is if not necessary, certainly of assistance. And how do we promote that free flow of information so that we could at least have some say? Get our opinion out just as some other land body use, for instance, commission might have that ability. How do we do that? And I, I go back to a little bit what, what you said, Bonnie, is I think we have to start with a, with a flow chart.
Borrow making.
Yeah.
Yes.
Where, where does, where does an application that comes before TPZ that's, that's out of the norm, that's going to affect the economics, not only of the town, but of the neighbors, which, which affect the town overall? How does that come before us? How do we get our input in, in a timely basis so that it's something that can be considered? Those kinds of things. It's the flow of information and our opinion that I see since I've been on the commission as the stumbling block. Not, I mean, it's great. We do have right now town council members who have been observing and attending our meeting. And I think that's, that's great. But like Jerry says, what if things change? What if we don't have town council members? So how do we regularly establish that? And whether that's a liaison from the Land Use Subcommittee? I think those are some things and structures that may need to be put in place.
Thank you. And what do you think about the idea of our reporting on a regular basis to one of the subcommittees?
I, I think, again, anything that promotes the free flow of information because we could, we could report to a committee and then some committee member may, may raise an issue. That's something that we haven't even thought about, that we need to bring back to, to our commission as well.
I mean, I see it as a back and forth more than as a circle.
Yeah, exactly.
And I think, and I think that's what, I think that might be step two of this, of this conversation, which will not happen today, but may be some homework for us, is to think about if, if in, in the best of possible worlds, we could figure out who talked to us and who we talked to, how we would like it to happen. The one caveat I want to give everybody is remember, remember we are advisory. We have absolutely no power than the power of persuasion.
Yeah.
And don't take it personally if nobody cares what you tell them because that's anyone who's been married for a while, they know how that works. Okay, that's just how it is. All right? Okay. Anything else, Steve?
No, no, I, I, I agree. It's, it's a free flow. And by that I mean back and forth with whomever we're speaking.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Phil?
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Talking about your marriage or are you going to talk about?
Yeah, no. Just as a reminder.
Just as a reminder that economic development is designed in many cases to create property tax revenue for the municipality. And these aren't in not in in priority order. But, you know, in in most communities, at least in New England, seventy to eighty percent of the revenue comes from taxes on property. Okay, real and and personal property. So there's a constant need as costs increase within budgets to raise tax revenue. Okay, you know, most of that's done through through the real estate property tax. The other other side of this is to create jobs. If you're in a growing community and you want to create great jobs, high paying jobs with benefits and and so forth. So those are two of the main reasons that the EDC can be involved with encouraging business aspects in the community.
Okay, thank you. Lenny?
I'm mute. Everybody has said a lot. I only been for a number of years, but I meant a few words. So I'll put it this way. I think in some cases, we all have, as you said, we have a lot of different backgrounds, experiences. We bring a lot to the table. And and that that's the both the best worlds, right? And I think sometimes we we, I think a lot of asks of us or we take it on because we want to do, we want to contribute on a high level. But again, we're just advisory. We're not we're not voted officials. So so our our job is to promote, assist, you know, the town, right? The best way we can, but at the same time, if they don't take our advice, we can't do nothing about it. But at the same time, I think we are almost with their sounding board, but I think they ask us a lot and put deadlines on it as though, you know, they give us deadlines, but yet they have a deadline. So so it's like we're we're subcommittee to them because they come to our meetings, but I'm thinking that based on the topic, they should select who should come to our meeting since our meetings are in in the morning. So I think they should come to our meetings based on the subject matter versus us trying to go to theirs. Because we I work a lot of, pretty much everybody retired entrepreneurs. So so I speak myself on that. And I'm thinking they send someone from their body to our committee about subject matter that they're leading in their subcommittee. So that way, we still advise, we should, I don't think we should overextend ourselves. But I think we should listen to what they have to say. But I think people in their subcommittee should come to our meetings versus us going to theirs because we all come together. Everybody has things to do. We're volunteers. We don't get paid for this. And but anyway, I agree with everybody else has said, but I think that we we do sometimes overextend ourselves. Not knowing it is just, we just want the best for the town.
Well, and I agree, Lenny. That's one of the reasons we're having this conversation now is that we've gotten into to an awful lot of weeds here and there. That would be the next topic of conversation of what we, where we really want to spend our energy. There's just so much time, whether we go to council, they go to us. I have I have no problem as chair doing a liaison with whatever committee, subcommittee we choose, say, every other month or something or something comes up. I think that's actually helpful. Exactly with Zoom. With Zoom, it's not a big deal to do that any longer. Okay, no, that that was very thoughtful. I mean, the one thing I want to mention, Bob, before I get to you, we do have this vacancy. I have I have really, really trying to find a specific type of skill set. And maybe I'm being too arbitrary about it. So I just would like people to start thinking about if they know somebody in the community that they feel would add to this conversation, please let me know, all right, or Phil. And we will we will look into it. But I have purposely left a seat open at the table because I think somebody wonderful is going to going to show up. And I I think it's going to happen sooner rather than later, so.
Bonnie.
Yes, yes, Steve.
If 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 we could just assist you in that, because I think from our last discussion, you were trying to get somebody from from the banking industry.
Banking or real estate, either one.
Right. So I I think that should be, and I agree with you. And and but we might just kind of broaden that because we might find some financial individuals from some of the larger business entities in town. You might have the kind of background that we.
Well, it was interesting, Steve. We, you know, we used to, in the day, when this thing first started, it was Command, Cigna, I'm trying to remember who else was there. There were three or four of the big.
Pepperd Farm.
Pepperd, no, this was way before Jake Brake. This was a law, this was in the beginning when when Caruso was doing this. But they were here. They came to us the same reason they joined the chamber, I think. There was very often that there were things they wanted to discuss in town that they didn't want to have be their face, be the be the face of the conversation. So they would come to us and look for a way of getting to town officials out there looking like they were being heavy handed. And because of that, you would end up with people that perhaps were not on the decision making end of an entity. So I'm I'm a little concerned about bringing the big boys back into this. I'm I'm more interested in what you were saying, Steve, is somebody that really is involved in either investment in the town or real estate, rather than or or a a business person, but someone who's a hands-on business person like like Diana, like Lenny. Just just my reaction to it. Okay, Bob?
Well, how about Mr. Butler? He's doing the great investment.
I talked, I've talked to to Paul a number of times. And I think, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, Jose, I think he's worried about a conflict of interest because he's got projects going on. I mean.
Yeah, I thi- I think so. I think him and his partner before was involved, I believe before even I got here, got uninvolved because they were bringing forward the town center project.
Right. I almost had him. And then then the the whole the whole thing started.
And didn't want to seem to be, you know.
Well, the same reason I end up in the coffee room every time you talk about the property behind the shopping center. But I, that's why I thought banking, real estate. And again, I just haven't, I've been, I've put feelers out. I haven't gotten, of course, things are in flux right now, but let's just leave that as another topic. But I just want to throw it out as people are thinking, if you come up with any suggestions, let either Phil or Jose or me know and we'll pursue it. Bob?
Thank you, Bonnie. There are some advantages in batting cleanup. I get to repeat what everyone else said, so I'll try not to do that. First of all, I I I think fundamentally, this is all about communication. Since we are voluntary, and I mean that on both ends, both we volunteer and it's voluntary on the part of others to listen to us. Just opening channels of communication, I think, is the most important thing. I understand what Siddiq has said. I would be very leery of having a formal presence in the political arena for lots of reasons that are obvious, including we don't want any implication that we're setting foot on other people's turf. However, I have a concept, and it's really only developed here. So pardon me if it's not fully fully operational. But that is that so many times there are economic components to do either what comes before the council or initially a project that may come through planning and zoning first, for instance. I wonder if we couldn't set up some voluntary but formal channel that says you can petition the EDC for their thoughts and opinion. So for instance, every major project that comes along, and I don't know how to define that, somewhere between opening a single restaurant and building an entire apartment block, we should get some notice of that and invite a people on a voluntary basis. For instance, we invited Cigna to come in and speak to us. They were not legally obligated to do that. But we invited them and they, I think, welcomed our, you know, thoughts. They didn't go along with all of them. But setting up some means where I I I don't know how it would how it would work on paper. But to say, here is a a form, you know, it's almost like petitioning the Supreme Court. And we don't have to take every case that comes before us. But a major project, we should learn about in some way and invite those people to come in if we choose, if we feel that it would be of value or worthwhile. I'm not trying to make a whole lot more work for us and have fifty items on every month's agenda. And the other is that certainly at the subcommittee level, we should say, please consult the EDC. Let us know what you're doing. My most recent example, and I think communication would have worked fine if people knew about it in this way, is as of last week, the the town council finally adopted an arts commission policy. But that went along for some time before anyone knew that we were working on a parallel track. Well, if we had talked earlier, either our input would have found its way there sooner or they could have had the benefit of of our support. So just that, that I think without stepping into the political arena in any way to open a channel of communication in some formalized way, again, voluntary, please let us know what's going on of all major projects, events. And by events, I mean policies as opposed to a specific project. And similarly, to invite all subcommittees. They may not even, some of them know that we have input that could be of value to them. To say, we're the EDC, we are consultative. We're happy to give our thoughts and opinion and reactions given that we have as an entire body, a vast range of experience in business development, et cetera, et cetera, real estate law. We could be of value to you. Please let us know what you're doing. So that's my thought.
Thank you, Bob. It's very interesting. That is really, a lot of what you're talking about, other than the formal written request, is is historically how EDC has handled things. It would it would basically go through the town planner, Jose, and I'm sure that's how it works now. Someone would come in, they would have a proposal, the planner would say to them, you know, why don't you see if EDC wants to give you some feedback on this? They are they are business people. They are not elected. They don't have a, you know, a dog in the in the race kind of thing. We think it might be helpful for you to get some feedback from them. And then I think it's also a good idea, Bob, that we've we decide whether we we think this is something we should hear or not because it is part of the problem we have. Everything just sort of gets thrown at us sometimes.
Can I just comment on that, Bonnie?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, obviously, for major projects, I do, I do, I, you know, I think a good example is the U-Pool, you pay people, I think. And and there has been others, I think, the the apartments came before EDC. The problem with saying, go to the commission and then having you say yes or no, is timing. So a lot of times we don't get these, you know, I might get something in the middle of first week of February that that may be going to the commission in March or or after your meeting in February, let's say, better example, that that may go to the Planning and Zoning Commission in March. And I usually will say, then you need to get to the EDC in March. And I'll put it, and if they agree, I'll put them on the agenda. If we have to wait another month, that's almost two, two, three months of delay on their part, which they they won't agree to. So a lot of times we do get, you know, projects that 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 don't apply, but we we get wind of them. Sometimes they wanted to keep confidential for what various reasons. You know, like, you know, when Trader Joe's was was first trying to come in, it was only a vague Project Cougar or something like that. I forgot what the name of it was. Project Tango, maybe. I think we've had, we've had quite a number of those that come in under those names. And and sometimes we don't even know who who they are. They just have a proposal and say, here's what we're doing. That's how many jobs they're doing. Okay. So, yeah, that's, but but I do. I mean, I I know there's one now that that I might have on as as on next week's agenda, where they're planning to do something with a property here in town. And they're just, they're going to get back to me because they have current tenants that may or may not know what's going on. So.
No, and I, and Jose, we understand that. Yeah, we're just, we're just trying to put a net out there kind of and catch the information we can. I think the idea that Bob has of of giving them a form that they can send to us, even if they don't want to come before the EDC, at least we would have a heads up what they were doing. But I also totally understand because we are a public meeting that there are a lot of instances in which they just don't want to show their hand, and and that's not a problem. But I don't think we're just talking about real estate development. We're also talking about things like the TIF, like complete streets, like the arts program. And I think it's it's, I like the idea of inviting the subcommittees to talk to us. So maybe what we ought to do is get a list of the subcommittees with your and Phil's guidance, figure out who interfaces with us most often and reach out to them. Tell them what we're trying to do. Tell them what we would like to interact with them. And see, if they say thanks but no thanks, don't take it personally, you know? Because I that's what I keep on reminding everybody, you can't get into your head that we're going to write ordinances that we're, or we could write them, but no one's going to listen to us necessarily. And then we're going to give opinions and no one's going to listen to us or no one's going to want to come here. This is, we're here, you know? We're available. We're a resource. If you want us, fine. If you don't, okay.
Thank you, Bonnie. And Jose, I understand perfectly, and I think you're doing a great job. Anyway, but certainly bringing things to the Economic Commission. It was just a a proposal, as you picked up, Bonnie, to increase incrementally any any amount that, hey, guys, we're over here. If you want to talk to us, we'd be more than happy to listen. And it's just that kind of thing where things may be going on. And timing, of course, is critical for a lot of work. We may not be able to fit into that. But something that's of a longer policy nature or a bigger project that has the time for our input is just stretching out a hand and saying, we're over here in case you don't. And let us know if you want us to to give you the benefit of our of our background and experience.
Steve?
I'd be concerned about an actual application or form given to an applicant that's in the in the in the town. I I I'm just concerned about easing the regulations. You give somebody an application, it's an automatic thought that they ought to be able, that that maybe they're responsible for doing this. I think perhaps as we've done it now with with Jose, I don't know whether it's done in conversation with them, whether we're there in a list of considerations for for an a specific application. But I'd be concerned. I think I think we're over, we don't want to over-regulate. I think we want to make it easy but stringent enough so that people will follow our guidelines. We don't want to hamper applications by saying, here's another board we have to go before. We don't.
I agree with, I agree with you. Perhaps we could just get on a checklist, as you said.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
Here's one of the resources we have in town.
Right.
And if you'd like to talk to them, let us know. And it was really, the form wasn't, in my mind, intended that it's something that that someone must do, you know, one more planning and zoning application, but more let the commission know if you're interested in talking to them. So it could be as simple as that.
I think just as a form, it it could be perceived that way. And that's why, following what you said, Bob, a checklist, just a an added item to a checklist with an explanation of why somebody might or might not want to.
And Steve, maybe we want to conversely give something to the potential applicant explaining who we are and what we do.
Well, that could be a check, that's a short statement on the checklist could be what
Yeah.
accomplish that.
I think that would be very valuable, Bonnie, anyway, that perhaps we could develop a quarter or half pager that explains what we do and what what we are able to advise on, you know. that explains what we do and what, what we are able to advise on, you know, just by category, not by specific facts.
And not a mission statement, something with meat to it that's very specific.
That's right, exactly. We have this kind of background on the commission, we would be willing to listen and, if we could be helpful. But that would be very useful, I think, not only to give to, to the public and applicants, but to circulate around the town and say, here's a resource if you'd like to use it, really, that's all, yeah.
Jerry, did you want to say something?
I think particularly for things like tax abatements. Town council should be informed of whether the EDC has supported a proposal, whether they have not gone to the EDC to get their opinion, or whether we have reservations about a proposal.
That's, that's a very, that's interesting, that's an interesting suggestion. Phil?
Yeah, I was just going to say, the CEEC is also interested in getting involved with review and approval to a, to a certain extent, less so perhaps than what we've been talking about today. But they get awfully concerned over carbon free and energy independence and, and some of these other things on the parts of, of projects, so.
Is there anyone on that subcommittee that might be interested or, or work as a member on our committee, on our commission?
Well, I don't know, you know, I'm, I'm just.
Because I'm thinking that's a piece that we don't have, you know, but I'm just saying, that's a piece we don't have. And certainly for the younger members of our community, I know that that is something that is extremely, extremely important. And maybe an engine, maybe some old engineering background in that, just, just throwing something outside there. But I, I think you're right, Jerry, about something like the tax abatements that maybe by having us on a checklist and explaining who we are, that that would get them, if, if they want to talk to us. You know, if they, as I said again, if they don't want to, fine, unless we really want to know what's going on. And then we can go to some other group that they've talked to and find out from them, I suppose. Nanda?
One thing I wanted to ask, do we want to come up with one or two things that we want to champion during a year? Or are we sitting, waiting for things to come to us to make recommendations?
Very good, proactive or reactive, and that's probably another conversation we should have. What do you think? What's your opinion?
I think it should be both, because at least we are championing something, as the EDC implemented this or developed this. So one thing that we think is necessary to grow the community, but also we are still waiting. So I think we should have both to have balance.
Okay, do we want to put that as an agenda item on when we don't have a really full agenda the next month or two? How's our next meeting, Jose, is that very full?
Next meeting is a week from today.
Yeah, who has the agenda on that, I can't remember.
It's up to you.
Are there a lot of new things coming up?
Depends on whether, there, there was a possible, someone may want to appear before you, but they were, they were going to get back to me.
Let's put it on new business, and if we don't get to it, we can, we can postpone it to the next meeting.
What do you want to, what's the agenda?
Well, I'm asking the rest of the commissioners, do you, do you want the idea of talking about whether, maybe we do it every year? Maybe we do it every quarter, every six months? What specific issues or topics we want to discuss or, or be involved in this year?
I, I think Nanda's suggestion is, is excellent, thank you, Nanda. And I was going to
You're welcome.
Just before she mentioned this, that in this conversation, but many times over the last year or two, we do seem to have a fair, I don't want to say overlap, because we don't do the same thing, but connection with the environment committee. We've been talking about solar, you know, even talking about streets has a lot to do with the environment, of course. I was going to propose that two overarching areas that we, and again, I'm not suggesting what we do at the next meeting, but, but two areas that we do seem to have a lot of connection with is aesthetics and the arts and the environment is both encouraging environmental, not environmental, excuse me, economic investment in making the town more attractive. So I'd like to throw out as a concept that we adopt something along those two lines and maybe even a more formal connection by invitation to work with the environment subcommittee. But I think this is a great idea for further discussion next week.
Phil?
Yes, I'm going to have to leave the meeting, I've got other commitments I have to go to and be involved with. But I think that we're heading in the right direction, I'm impressed in, in with the conversation and so forth today. I think, I don't see Michelle on here, I think at some point, Bonnie, you need to reach out to her because she had some strong, I think, opinions about things as well, so.
Yeah, we will, she, she just left me a message that she wasn't available, that's all.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry to leave you all, but.
Well, I'm glad you enjoyed the conversation.
Well, I'm sure.
Glad you were here.
Okay, well, we'll see you at the, next week, I guess.
Yes, thank you very much, Phil.
You're welcome.
Bye. Okay, so Jose, I, I like the two topics you came up with, Bob, we'll have you maybe formally bring them in the, the next meetings. Let's, let's put that on the agenda, that we're going to have a conversation of major areas, major areas of interest perhaps, but maybe you want to put something together, what you wanted to say, okay? And give it to Jose, would that be all right?
Yeah, I'll, 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 okay, I'll send you a draft.
Okay, thank you. All right, I, I was trying to kind of recap this conversation and not have this meeting go too long as I still would like to talk about some, some, our subcommittees, that's what that second topic is. If I am, if I got the gist of what we're talking about, we do want to have some kind of interaction, a free flow chart, as Steve put it, between us and other entities. I think we, I think what we need, Jose, is perhaps a list from you of the subcommittees and then with asterisks or explanations of those that you think would be most important for us to have interactions with. You could do that for us before the next, the next meeting?
Yeah, that should be easy, I mean, it's.
And I don't think it's a lot, but I think it'll just be interesting.
I think, yeah, that's easy, the, the subcommittees are on the website.
Yeah.
A listed.
And then the idea of a liaison, I, I, I think, I think we got a feeling that there's a, you know, like political. So we want to sort of step away from that, but that doesn't mean that we don't interact. I think that the, the free flow chart, Siddiq, would, would accomplish a lot of what you were suggesting. Do you agree?
But that was, that was my, one of the points is two things, hierarchy and information flow. So Steve has, you know, articulated that very well. It has to be, you know, interaction of the movement of information, you know, both sides. And like I said, there are loose ends, if we can tie them, the efficiency can be increased and communication can be increased too. You know, I mean, it's, ultimately, I think our, our commissions, commission has two big limitations. Number one, I feel is, it is the public committee, so we can't meet, you know, meet together and make a decision on our own way, we have to include the public in there. So the meeting time and, you know, the agenda and other things have to be subject to that. And other is, of course, only the advisory status that we have. So I think those are the two big limitations of our commission. And recognizing that we are doing great job, you know, so, and, yeah, so to cut short, you know, the, the information flow would be a great, with a flow chart, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And we've, so we basically talked, perhaps no formal application, but a request that, that people, Jose, try to suggest that people talk to us. We want to write a short explanation of what the EDC does and how we can help. Let's, does everybody want to kind of try that and see what we come up with? Does anyone want to volunteer to do it?
I think it, it is somehow expressed in our, on, on the town website, you know, what is EDC, what does it do? I think, there is there.
It, it, it does, but as I said, that's, to me, is more like a mission statement. And I just have this personal aversion to mission statements because I think that they just, they sound good, but they don't necessarily give you the details. That was my only, only comment.
Why don't we all, Bonnie, send you just, just a, a couple of lines?
Yeah.
And then you, or maybe a couple of us could, could integrate them. Obviously, there'll be a lot of overlap and trying to keep it very, very short. But yeah, I think everyone should just send you no more than two sentences.
Okay, I would appreciate that, and it's basically what you think the EDC does and how we can help with, how we can help economic development. If there's nothing else about this, and this has been a fantastic conversation. I'm, I'm sorry Michelle wasn't here because she's our resident contrarian and she would certainly give us some other things to think about, but hopefully she will be at the next meeting with us, everything is okay there. But, and again, this, the second conversation really did have to do with the subcommittee. Michelle has a, is a chair and the only participant in a subcommittee on ordinances and regulations. And we had a somewhat, I think, testy conversation about it at the last meeting, it wasn't meant to be that way, but it came out that way. I have a lot of concerns and with the, with the way this subcommittee has tended to take an awful lot of the energy and the time of the commission. And I'd like to hear from the other commissioners, if one, they think it's something that perhaps should be done on a private basis rather than some, under the, of, of the EDC. If, if on the, on the other side, you feel it should continue to be something that the EDC does, how we get either greater participation or, I guess, greater participation. But it tells, it says to me, if no one wants, nobody else besides Michelle is interested in doing this, that to me is very telling, is whether the EDC feels this is a, a major topic of concern or not. So again, I'm going to go around Siddiq.
I'm totally actually indifferent, I, I think we have already other things to deal with. So I would rather not step in there, you know, so. And, and another thing is, I would like us to discuss this topic in our present, in our presents.
Oh, we will, I just want to get a feeling of, is anyone here that wants to?
So I, I, I don't have any particular issue if she's doing it or somebody else is doing it, you know, it's worthwhile activity. But I really don't have some serious input there.
Okay, the real question is, do you think that that, that, that the writing of ordinances is something that the EDC, EDC should be doing?
No, I, I don't think that's our, that should be our, you know, task to do. We have some other important things to do, that's better deal, it should be staying somewhere else. So yeah, I, I don't want to be taking on this one in our commission, no.
Okay, thank you. And, and we will have this conversation again with Michelle, whether we have it privately before the meeting or not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Jerry?
I, I wouldn't want to see it be, and, and I don't want to institutionalize it, but I think we're taking advantage of some special skills that Michelle has. And I think that's a, a very nice thing, very good for the town.
Is there a better place for those skills to be used, though? I think that's what I'm, I mean, one thought I had was, and I don't know how it works, Jose, because Phil's not here, is, is could Phil set up a subcommittee that involved not just EDC, but anyone that was interested in doing this, and they would be like in the advisory?
Well, yeah, anybody, anybody could propose anything to the council. I mean, there, there's, there's a formal council committee called the Administration and Education Subcommittee. They, they came up with the arts policy, they, they tend to handle changes to town ordinances that are generic and, and also policies, so. You know, and I, and I think I communicate, you know, in our conversations, that, with, between myself and the chair, I've said, you know, I see, I see the EDC role as being a macro, you know, just identifying issues that may be out there, not necessarily being so much in the weeds that you actually write an ordinance. I think you, there's, you, you know, it's macro, you bring your concerns up to the, either the council, if it's a town ordinance, or the TPZ, if it's a zoning regulation. They control staff, so they could either say, yeah, we think it's a great idea, let's work with staff to come up with something, or they can say, not at this time. And you avoid wasting a lot of time over something that, that may not be of interest to the council or, or the TPZ. So, you know, I, I, you know, I, I see you guys as, as idea people who can see different things, you have different perspectives and, and, and can identify when there's something lacking in an ordinance or needs to be changed, and then bringing that up to the council or the TPZ and then having them take over the process, which is, anyway.
But Bonnie, are you going around formally, or?
No, you can, no one else minds, I'll, I'll let you go next.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I, I think what Michelle is doing is, is of value. But at the same time, as a, as a matter of policy, I would like to see us back away, as we've really discussed a lot this morning, from our being in the weeds, as Jose has said. Because I think frankly, this may be working with what she's doing now. But if we stick our nose into too many places, people will be very loathe to come to us. And they won't feel that we are giving objective, you know, dispassionate advice based on our experience, but, but really are, are getting in the middle of their business. So I'd like, as a matter of, you know, formal policy, even if it's not in writing, to say, no, we should not be doing this, and certainly not any more than what Michelle has already started. I'd like to see us step away from this completely.
Okay, thank you, Bob, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, if you, if I may, that, that Michelle can do a good job she's doing as an individual, but not at, you know, time of the commission, and that would be a great thing. And if she brings back to the commission something relevant regarding ordinances, that might be very welcome. But as, as, as a part of the activity of the commission, I think we should stay away from that and let her contribute as an individual if she makes, likes to make that contribution.
I think, I think that's a great idea, Siddiq, that if, if you wanted to render some advice on economics or Larry on engineering or, or Steve on law, that could be of value, but certainly not wearing the hat of the commission. Good point.
Okay, thank you. Steve, I'll go back to Nanda.
I think Michelle brings an excellent background to, to the commission. However, I don't think that the commission itself should be involved in the minutia of an ordinance. If we're asked about a policy for an ordinance for somebody else to, to run with in terms of writing, I think that's fine, but I don't think we should be involved in the minutia. I think it's taken away from the time that we would have better served for overall economic policies for the town, for review of other items. I think I, I certainly respect Michelle and what she's done, and we ought to continue to promote her and continue to have her do that. But not necessarily on behalf of the EDC.
Okay, thank you. And Nanda?
Basically echoing everything that was said prior. Michelle brings knowledge, expertise and passion in, in the work she does. But in terms of doing it under the umbrella of the EDC, I don't, I think we should defer from that. Our job again is basically to focus on economic development and providing advice. So if we're co-mingling the two, then that's where we're going to end up with, you know, conflicts in terms of, are you listening to me, I did this work and it's not, you know? So I think that provide the expertise outside of the commission. That's my take.
Thank you. Lenny?
Yeah, I pretty much echo what everybody else has said about Michelle's contribution. I think back on urban planning, so that's like perfect for that. She has a passion for it, it, it does take a lot of our time. And so hopefully she can do it as an individual and bring it back to the commission as a safe place to. as a safe place to talk about it, you know. So, yeah, that's my, my observation.
Okay, again, we're gonna, we'll leave us on the agenda, Jose, for the next meeting so we can talk about how ordinances, I'll have to think about this. We're going to talk about the ordinance subcommittee and see if we want to dissolve it, basically. This is, if you read the minutes of the last meeting, Michelle basically said she realized that that's something that we might want to do and that's fine. If the EDC doesn't want to do it, she'll do it. I just, I want to make sure that, that she understands that she is respected and that her skill set is respected, but this has taken a, this has taken much more time than I ever expected it to. And I think that I hear that echoed by the rest of the commissioners. Am I correct? Okay. Okay.
Definitely.
Okay, Nyanda?
Um, one other thing. I know we had the subcommittee for the ordinance, but what is the, what are we doing moving forward? Do we really need to have subcommittees based on the fact that we're just an advisory board? So this is something that we should look into, like how do we need to be layered any further? Because I think we all decided or voted on having this subcommittee. So how do we move forward in the future? Do we not have some subcommittees and just stay as our flat structure as we are now and provide advice? And as we had discussed earlier, come up with one or two projects that we want to take on for the year, but not necessarily on a subcommittee level?
Okay, good question. Steve?
I really see us working as a committee as a whole for most things. I think if there's a, if there's a certain application, whether it's a specific application for, for land use that comes before us or if there's some ordinance that comes before us, we could always establish an ad hoc committee to review that and to make a recommendation. But I think we ought to consider doing it as ad hoc committees for specific purpose with a limited scope and, and keep it to that basis. I think we work very well as a group.
I agree with you. So you're basically saying we're going to be proactive when it comes to deciding whether or not we want to get involved with ordinances or not. Am I, is that what I'm hearing, Steve? We're not, we're going to be reactive, not proactive?
No, it really depends upon the depth of the, of the ordinance. I mean, maybe it be an ordinance that's, that's a simple change that may affect the economics of the town that we could discuss as a group, but if it, if it's more involved, then perhaps we do want to get an ad hoc committee to.
And what if, and if Michelle ends up being the only person on the ad hoc committee, that's, that's how it is, right, basically? Yeah.
I would hope that it would be more, because it would be limited in scope and limited in time.
Yeah, okay. Sadiq?
Yeah, I think, I perceive the idea of subcommittee as like some specialized, you know, topic that some people want to look into depth, into it at depth, you know. Like the commission may not be really having time to do that and it might need some little more research and in-depth look. So then we can say, anybody interested in picking up on this topic, say, two people or three people can, you know, look into that matter a little more closely and then bring it back to the commission that this is our finding in terms of research or other ideas or ramifications of this idea. So I think that the, the concept of having subcommittee or ad hoc committee is good, but it should be when we need to probe into some idea proactively or reactively, either way. If somebody has brought up the project and we say, well, it needs a little bit more insight. So any two or three people can get together and spend a little more time in depth on that and then bring their finding to the commission to make the task easier. So the concept should stay there, but it should not be really part, made a part of a regular, regular procedure.
So.
Bonnie, when, there you go next.
If I might, Bob?
Sure, please.
I'm going to use Bob and the arts as an example.
Yeah.
He took the arts as a cause celebre very intently, did a very thorough job. And in effect, Bob acted as a subcommittee for us. I mean, it was not formal. It was, you know, nobody voted on saying, Bob, don't do this. Bob, you need to do this. But that's effectively what happened. To his credit, he acted, you know, and
Thank you.
brought us things. And I think that's the way we ought to work. Now, if he thought that one of us could contribute, we certainly could have said, Bob, count me in. Let's discuss it.
I do work on the subcommittee with him, just so you know.
Sure.
No, no, and everyone's.
Bonnie, I'm sure you work on a little bit of all of what.
I understand, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure you do, but I think, I think that's the way we can continue to operate.
So let's talk about how a, a subcommittee or an individual with an interest, a specific interest, reports the commission, because I think that's part of what I'm hearing is the problem with what's happened with the ordinance committee.
Bonnie, if I could, when you're done briefly, I want to make a suggestion which, which might break through this semantically.
Go ahead, Sadiq, and then you can make the suggestion, Bob. Yes, Sadiq?
Yeah, to answer your question, it is very simple to my mind, you know. If I have an idea on which I have worked or want to work, I can, you know, put in, in front of the commission that this is the idea I think we should look at. And then the commission can say, okay, go look further or like Steve said, somebody may offer that and he or she may be willing to get involved in that idea and then put it on the agenda. So, you know, this idea.
Well, we kind of did that, but unfortunately it developed a life of its own, I think, this one, this one topic. But yeah, no, I agree.
You know, I mean, like, like Steve's example of Bob is very good. We have spent some time on arts projects, you know, two, three times, four times in meetings. But, you know, it is, it is baby and he has done a good job at it and taken good care. So, yeah, and this, this is the way I think EDC can make contribution, you know. That is, this is the place of generating ideas and also reacting to the ideas. So that is, I think, where this subcommittee idea, like Steve was also saying, you come up with anything and put it on agenda just to probe into the feeling of the commission. If there is anybody else who would like to participate in it or, you know, let the individual do it on her own or his own.
And then Sadiq, send it to the appropriate subcommittee that can take action. So basically a council, either TPZ or council. I think that, I think that's what we have to make sure that that's the next step that happens.
Bonnie?
Yes, Bob?
I have a suggestion. It's going to be a little difficult for people to drop this language, but I think we're having a problem with using the word subcommittee. And although we are not a political entity, we're inside a, a political environment, so it's natural to pick up this term. I don't think it should be called a subcommittee at all. I think it should be called, and people are welcome to come up with our other ideas, a working group. A subcommittee has an implication that it's part of the formal structure. And three or four conversations ago, I was going to ask Jose. I almost fear that having a subcommittee starts to edge toward, we have to invite the public. We have to have formal meetings like, like we're doing today. I don't think any members of the public are here, but we have to set this up with a date, with an agenda. That's not the way I worked on the arts. That's not the way Nyanda's in the past worked on her project about a track center. I think it should be a working group. Everyone is welcome to join. And that's how I operated. I didn't think of myself as a subcommittee of one. And in fact, Bonnie joined me on, on many meetings, but I was also dispatched to meet with other people and there was no formal structure to it. And then, you know, you can get on the agenda monthly and say, the working group on this or that wants to report to the commission as a whole. So I, I'd like to propose that we drop the term subcommittee. My idea is working group. If people have another phrase that would, would serve better and it just gets us away, and I know Michelle had a background, again, doing a good job, but being in a formal structure from town government was thought of in those terms. But I don't think we should ever use the term subcommittee. It starts to edge too much toward a formal political structure.
Response to people? What do they think about the idea of not calling the subcommittee, calling it a working, a working group, which then, am I right, Jose, would eliminate the need to have to notice and take minutes and that kind of thing?
Yeah, I think it's a, that's a good suggestion. You know, when you start talking about committees and, and subcommittees and then people can question whether they're, they're formal and require agendas and minutes and all that kind of good stuff. But again, you know, what Bob was doing was a great example, you know. He's, he was out there talking to people out generally and he wasn't constrained by a formal subcommittee of structure. He could, he could call and talk to whoever he liked and then report back, which is what he's doing. So I think that's good.
Thank you, Jose. And one other thought, going back to a comment you made a while back this morning. If we have a, a working group, it could be formed quickly and moved quickly as opposed to, for instance, if someone wanted to consult with the commission and they have to wait an entire month for our next, our next meeting. Three of us or two of us could meet with someone or speak with them and say, hey, we're willing to talk to you. Here's some ideas. Do you want us to bring it back to the whole commission for their thoughts? So it would actually get us moving quicker on a lot of things as well.
Yeah, I agree.
I would just be careful about, about how that was structured to make sure that we were subject to freedom of information or not subject to freedom of information.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
I think that just, that just ought to be reviewed. I like the idea, Bob, but I think it just, just should be reviewed to make sure we're okay with it.
Totally agree.
Okay, Jose, can you check that out for us, please?
Sure.
I'm, I'm just about done. I don't know if anyone else has anything they want to say.
You look like you're just getting started, Bonnie.
Well, maybe. I've been down in the fresh air. That helps. I think this was such a wonderful discussion. I am so proud of everybody in the commission because they really stepped up and they had thoughts and they listened to one another. It's wonderful. This is, this is a wonderful way to have a group work together and I'm very, I'm very proud of us here.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank to all, thanks to all of you. Our next meeting is going to be February 9th. If you have anything that you want to comment on, you can certainly send me an email or Jose. In the meantime, stay safe, stay well. And Jose, could you and I talk to Joyce for a couple of minutes about the minutes when this is over with? Would that be okay?
Sure.
And stop recording?
Okay.
Okay?
Are we adjourned?
Okay, I take a motion to adjourn?
So much.
Okay, wait a minute. Not everybody wants. Okay. Nyanda moved and who seconded over there, Bob?
I think Steve.
Steve, okay, got it. Okay, thank you all very much and see you next week. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
We'll talk soon.